We pray, Lord, for the family and friends of Ed O'Farrell and the people that served with him. And we pray, Lord, that you offer condolences and comfort to his family at this time. And we pray, Lord, that you also grant us the wisdom to be able to move our town into the future. In your heavenly name we pray, amen.
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 Okay, with the clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Grant.
Present.
Mrs. Carnahan, Mr. Moss.
Present.
Mr. Pointer.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Rotary.
Present.
Attorney Barst.
Present.
Junior Counsel, Morgan Wood.
Present.
Lillian Irwin, Grace Heller, Addison Hill.
Okay, does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting? That would have been September 8th.
I did not. I didn't see them.
Oh, why not?
I don't know.
Do you want to look at a copy for?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I got it.
You got it.
They're not in your, they're all down there.
Oh, okay.
I handed those all out.
So I didn't get a chance to look at that.
Everything looks older than me.
Okay, I make a motion that we pass the minutes.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous, passes. There's a signed copy. Okay, citizens petitions, I've got a couple of things here that I added just as an FYI. Scott Gregory came in and requested closure of West Mill Street for an event on October 24th that he's having at the West Mill Social Hall. So I told him I would bring that up at tonight's meeting. And I don't think he's planning on closing the entire street, but he wants to close it out from his property there. So, from the front of his property to the, probably where the grand a dollar alleyway is.
He just wants the alleyway, basically, right there?
Well, in front, right in front of his property there. I don't think he's trying to close off in front of the Devon. No, it's in between his property and basic auto sales, isn't it?
Well, that allows the Devon to have plenty of room as far as.
Should, shouldn't interfere with their thing at all. And he usually works pretty good with hoodrows because they cater over there and everything.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it either.
He's fine.
What was the date again, Mayor?
October 24th. Do need a motion for that. It wouldn't hurt, we'll have to have a motion. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, this is kind of more of an FYI. The Freed Methodist Church plans a trunk or treat during the merchants' trick-or-treating time on October 31st at the new city parking area at Jackson and Perry. So it'd be in the 200 block there, but they kind of wanted everybody to know about it. I don't think anybody's got a problem with it, but if you do, say so.
Be nice to see it being used.
Bingo. Yeah, I think it'll be a great location for it because people can drive through there. Committee reports, I think Kim was planning on being here, but I don't see her, so we'll skip the week update. I did meet with her late last week, and they are moving forward with the grant for the downtown market. Sounds like that that is on the cusp of coming into their hands money-wise. They do have contractor down there working on the building, they're working on the roof, and they're going to try to get the exterior done before really bad weather hits, so they're hitting that pretty hard. They also are getting ready to take bids on tearing down the building that they just purchased, the old dry cleaners building, Paris Cleaners, so it'd be good to get that out of there. I just saw an email today, exchange back and forth that I was copied on about getting the weeds cut behind there. Brian Craft's working on that because it's, the weeds are pretty high. Attica 200 update, thought maybe Bauer Band would be here tonight, but I want to thank everybody who was involved in the presentations at Heritage Days. That was an amazing thing to see down there. Councilman Smith, Councilman Pointer, Councilman Moss, you guys all worked hard on commemorating this milestone for city history. Yes, thank you all. I know you've got, especially me, you've got a lot of hours in this, and Johnny and Jim for the pointer, for the signs, Jimmy Pointer, for the signs and the posters, and that's, and there's more to come. We're not, you're not done yet, sorry.
Yeah, that's the point I wanted to make is that we saw some, some of the folks on Facebook, on the bicentennial page, they're like, okay, well, great, what's next? And of course, it about killed all of us to get to that point. And, and so I was just talking with Councilman Moss about this, that, you know, we need to see what is next for this next month and the month after that, and finally December. So we definitely need to keep it going.
I want to give a special thanks out too to the entire Bauer Band family. They were kind of the driving force, I was going to say the boots on the ground for this whole thing, but they, they brought this all to fruition, along with a lot of help. There were some folks from, didn't even live in Attica, that helped out with this, and I was, I was so impressed with everybody, so thank you again.
Mayor, should we also talk about Heritage Days too at the same time?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the Heritage Days folks did an amazing job. John Hunt and Kelly Froge.
Absolutely.
They, they just really showed the city of Attica what kind of powerhouse that riverfront is and what can be done. And while the citizens are watching patiently for the downtown to be built, there's nothing better than watching a little kid get on a pony and ride it and have, you know, and everybody just had a great time down there. And from my perspective, I just was walking around, Larry, you and I talked about Jimmy, that this is, the riverfront is such an untapped potential for the city of Attica. It's what Attica was built on, and I think that we need to return there quickly. And I think that we need to give our support to the Heritage Days folks. And I would also like to see us consider two or three more weekends in finding something to do during that time period, because the city owns the whole riverfront and it's just wide open. And the fact that we're at the point where we're looking for new dollars and different things like that, I think that we should really consider, you know, putting effort into that and the Parks Department as well. So I'll get off my horse now.
Okay, thank you. So that was a pretty good summation. You'd asked me to put the park board on here for tonight, is there somebody?
Well, Eli, I see Eli out there. He and I talked and he said that he would come. And of course, we had all kinds of stuff that we talked about at the Parks Board meeting, but again, that goes back to the point that, and I was talking at the last meeting about how could we get more money to the Parks Board to do things? And, you know, we talked about it in the redevelopment commission and all these things about beautifying spaces or making people, hold people accountable to fixing up their yards and stuff. But I think that the Parks Department can make even a bigger impact if given more resources and working close, a little bit more closer with the city council and helping us maybe try to realize some more success down at the riverfront. And I don't know, Eli, did you have a chance to talk to the folks at all?
Well, we did meet, sir, though we didn't have a forum last week, so we didn't technically meet, but yeah, we're, we're working on a couple of things right now. The bridges, which we've been working on for a long time, we finally got one done. But we're kind of at a weird spot right now because we're also working on moving the Attic Elementary equipment from the elementary to some of the parks. And we may get into a situation where if we install it somewhere else professionally, maybe that's one less bridge, so things like that. So just next budget season, kind of think of us, our budget's pretty, pretty substantial as it is, but it always opens up more opportunities for us, more money to get.
You know, Eli, for me, it's just every time I look at the riverfront, it's just, it's just an untapped, untapped resource that could really put money into the city immediately. I mean, I'm talking not like with Attica Recreation, we're on a 10-year plan there. You know, if, if we could find a way to take advantage of the, just the open, the open space and open dates during the summer and work with Parks Department to try to come up with, and I don't know, Larry and I talked about, you know, doing a rodeo one, I know other places.
I think the boat races would.
Well, the boat races, actually, that's, that's one I'd love to see happen. But we really would like to start collaborating with Parks Department because I think that's the natural place, you know, to go. And, I mean, do you guys feel like you have the resources?
I think, yeah, I mean, we'd be willing to follow whatever vision the council wants. I mean, if the direction you guys are going to take is down by the river, we, right now, we put a lot of our resources into Ravine Park, like I said, with the bridges. So I mean, if the river's a place where we're looking to expand, I'm sure the park board would be more than happy to help with that.
Well, I mean, I'm so convinced after seeing what happened at Heritage Days that I think that it just could bring in, you know, thousands upon thousands of dollars every event we can have over a weekend, you know, if we can have two or three of these, two or three more per, per year. And there's, there's going to be monies that come out of that that would hopefully help the Parks Board, you know, grow and take on additional responsibilities. I do also think that I'd like to see the council get behind forming maybe what's called Attica Riverfront LLC. We have, we have a main street and we have like these different organizations that I think that a nonprofit should be created to deal with the riverfront property.
Somebody kind of focus on.
Absolutely focus on it and be in lockstep with the Parks Department. And that's where I want to exert a lot of my energy going forward, because I just think it's wide open and $1 invested there is going to have a $10 return. That's just my opinion. I think that $1 invested in downtown is, will eventually bear fruit, but we've got to build buildings, we've got to do all kinds of things, and it's a slow burn there. That eventually will be great, bricks and mortar, but we've got the opportunity to really make an impact at the riverfront immediately. So I don't know, I just, I wanted to talk about this tonight and let everybody know what I'm thinking. And I think Mr. Pointer and I have talked a lot about this.
I think there could be money out there that we could probably get grants for and other stuff that would help. I've seen some stuff, I think we could get this forward to some, it'll take a while to do, but I think we'll get started on it, we'll be progressing forward.
That it? Eli, you good?
Yeah.
Junior Counsel Concerns Reports, Morgan?
Um, I have a few. Okay, so I've had some family members come up to me and complain about the drains on the streets, clogged with debris.
Are they saying where?
Um, I think it's kind of like sorted, but spread out, spread out around town.
Now, when they say that to you, I mean, now in construction areas, a lot of times they'll take and have like mats over the sewers to protect a lot of junk and stuff going down, especially during construction. Were they referring to any of those by chance?
No.
Oh, they weren't, okay.
Um, another, I have students wondering when they'll be on the city, on the junior council.
Well, I've got the three that you gave me.
Yes, and those three are actually the ones asking me.
Okay. I was, I was kind, and I talked to Grace at the ballgame the other night, and I was kind of hoping to get some more applications before we make decisions on who to put on there. And then I need to get with you on that one, I need that one refilled out with a last name on it and a little bit more information, because all I got was somebody's first name and I couldn't hardly read it to begin with, so.
Um, and then another thing, student media, I believe is starting to work on Heritage Days brochures for next year.
Great, good, great.
Are they, junior council going to be appointed position or are they going to be voted by the student body or?
Last year I had eight, well, year and a half ago, I had two, I had eight applicants, and just so happened we had eight positions on there. So everybody that applied was put on. I, I think it's a situation where if we have too many, then we would have to do that, but fortunately, or unfortunately, we don't have more people asking than we have positions. So it works out okay. Part of the application process, they have to be recommended by a teacher at the school with a vouch form, and, and that helps, and hopefully we get some more applications than just the, just the three. And not that there's anything wrong with the three.
Larry, I think it's also important they show up, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Because Morgan's been doing a real good job showing up, but you're the, you've been the lone ranger quite a few times, and so we really want to emphasize, it's like, you know, you need to come work.
Unfortunately, we had a couple of the, the first eight that I think they came and got sworn in and then never came back, so. Wow, we probably need to set some guidelines for that too. Yeah, that's a good point, thank you.
Probably have to just say a minimum amount that you need to attend, because they do have other activities.
Right, yeah. But if you don't have the time to do it.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Well, I actually had.
But that might be all you're getting, I mean, for applications.
Community members sent me some guidelines that they, they thought that would be good for that, and actually there's a document attached to that, so haven't distributed that out to you yet, but I think that's an excellent idea. And I, I've gotten a lot of feedback and a lot of praise from the community about you guys showing up and getting your input in, and I think it's, it's been a good thing so far. Eli was one of our first ones, and look where he's at today.
Still here?
Yeah, he got a picture of it. Someday I'll say, yeah, he used to be on our junior council, now look at it. Department heads, Mr. Swank.
I do not have any.
Eric, what, what? I know leaves aren't falling yet, really, but.
Is the leaf machine ready to go?
If we're asked, I just want to make, it's all ready to go, good to go.
Like a new machine.
We are looking for people to work on, though.
Are you?
You're retired now.
Working? I am retired, yes.
You drive the truck.
And I still, I might, I, yeah, I don't know. I hate to commit anything.
Nothing else, Eric? Chief Miller, I know you got an update on the cat situation that we've talked to, but I, go ahead and talk about that if you'd like.
Can I start with the stuff that I don't want to forget about?
You can, you can.
Um, we just completed a hiring process. We offered a conditional letter of employment to an individual. That was accepted. We're currently in the process of getting him, his required documentation to get him the retirement fund as part of the conditions, and hopefully here soon we'll have a new police officer to introduce to you. We have purchased three new vehicles. We're waiting on some financial things to finish up with the dealership, and then we'll be able to go fix those up and bring them home and start the outfitting process. On the cats, after a long, listening to a long discussion at the previous council meeting, was just trying to figure out a solution to that issue, so I scheduled a meeting with Pauls and Pauls and their, they were in communication with their vet to try to help find a solution. The solution that we came up with is that we have an appointment with Pauls, our first appointment with Pauls and Pauls on November 11th. The city police department will own, is in the process of purchasing five live traps, and we've set up the logistics to trap five cats at a time. The Pauls and Pauls band will come to the city that following morning, pick them up, transport them to Lafayette. They will be spayed or neutered, notched, and then released by Pauls and Pauls, and then our traps will be returned to us for the next appointment.
And they release them in Lafayette?
We will have designated release sites.
You said three vehicles, are they SUVs or cars or do you know?
Three SUVs. We, we've been, we've been contemplating and navigating that process for about four or five months to where we weren't going to exactly get what we need.
Yeah.
And so we've kind of been stubbing our foot on it for quite some time and called to check on status, and just so happened that a department within the state backed out on three silver Cabos in the same manner of our current ones, so we should come in very quickly.
It'd be good for you around.
And you're going to outfit them with the same, the same compatible equipment that you guys have?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you for taking the ball and running with the cat situation. I think that, you know, maybe we can, we'll keep chipping away at this, we'll put a dent in it and.
Well, I think we'll be able to, you know, we'll be able to document numbers at this point, you know, on the, on the amount of animals that we've at least turned over.
That will give us a good idea of exactly what.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Cindy Chambert. I'm interested in the cat story. I just have a question, you talk about a release site, will they go back to where they were trapped? Is that the release plan?
There'll be designated release sites, that's.
So in other words, going back to their.
There'll be designated release sites.
I guess, where might those possibly be? I mean, are you going to take, like, take them down to the river or to the park area?
Um, we're trying to, I mean, they are not.
Assess it somehow?
They are not definitive at this point in time, but we're trying to get them out of highly congested areas.
Okay, don't bring them to the river.
And is it possible we could maybe advertise, because there are farmers or people that want cats?
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we say that these cats will be spayed or neutered and.
Maybe through Pauls and Pauls?
Well, the, the problem that we incur there is then they would have to be taken back to Pauls and Pauls site, they start to incur more financial burden because they're being housed up there. Farmer says, yeah, I want, I want four barn cats, but he doesn't come and pick them up for four or five days, and we're trying to reduce costs through the process, but to get our ultimate goal of decreasing our cat population.
Gotcha.
Now, I need to reiterate too that cats are not to run at large, dogs are not to run at large within the city, per our ordinance. So if you own a cat, if you open your door and you let the cat out, you're in violation of the ordinance. I'll just say that. Now, I know a lot of people do that, but with that being said, it's not what our ordinance says.
And your cat could get caught in a life trap. I mean, it's possible.
Yeah, or worse.
Yep, right.
So just throwing that out there, I guess.
Just trying to figure out a plan to help.
I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah, is that something where you can share with maybe us where those traps are going to be positioned? You know, in what sector or, you know, in the city?
Uh, I mean, they're going to be all throughout the city. They're going to move, I mean, as we have a hot trap site, we're going to continue to track there, and as that site gets.
Tolls dies out.
Dies down, we're going to move those traps. It's a lot of communication that's going to go every time we set a trap, but we need to send out the communication line.
I was just kind of curious, I didn't know if you were going to just set them at the same place every time or?
We're going to work on our highly congested areas, and so those trap areas, just as if you were trapping wildlife, those congested areas tend to not show results, we'll move those traps to different locations.
There are citizens who want to help you guys with your efforts, is there a possibility of them being able to chip in, maybe their own live traps, or be able to at least?
I think the biggest, the biggest part is it's going to create some financial burden. We're purchasing traps, we're going to have cat food to, to lower these in, in a wet food diet or a wet food. So it's going to, it's going to create some financial responsibility from us. The biggest deal is, is if we have too much help, we, we scheduled this for a five-cat rotation with Pauls and Pauls, that we're not overwhelmed.
You don't end up with 10.
And if we have 15 this day, you know, that kind of shows in the book. I think someone's studying in circular.
Ma'am, just go get your hand up out here.
But you ought to know too that if you would happen to trap a cat and that ear's clipped on that cat, that cat's already been done.
We understand.
I mean, I have one cat that they just did a little clip down on it, you can't all right tell, but now they clip like.
Half the, half the year.
Almost half of the year, yeah.
Okay, I don't want to spend too much time on cats here. Morgan, do what you have.
Okay, one last thing about the cats. We finally found a place, there's a house right next to it, so I think they said they have like a cat rescue of themselves that they do, they're brothers, and they have like tons of cats indoor and outdoor. So I can talk to them more and like, see if they want to take cats.
I think that's probably where he's going to be putting the traps.
That's probably where we want to get him caught at. Chief Little?
A few things, building updates, the addition part's going well, they're starting to frame up the inside, starting to look really, really nice in there. It's scheduled to be done at the end of November, then they'll move to the remodel park on the inside, that'll be done probably the end of January, so.
Sweet, good.
It's going well.
Looking good.
I'll be quite honest with you, we are over budget, however, we do have the funds to cover that, it's just, it is what it is. I mean, it's an old building, we're running the things that we didn't expect.
Every building.
You know, the wiring is just building project. Atrocious, just terrible. I'm surprised, well, it's brick, so it's not going to burn down.
It had a fire.
So they're doing a good job, we're just having some supply chain issues right now, but it should be starting to come in pretty quickly, so you'll start to see a huge difference. But most important thing, we are having a service on the 26th of this month, from 1 to 4, for the old fire chief, Ed O'Farrell, will be having the last alarm at 4 o'clock. Dispatch will have a little saying, they'll say over the radio, we have bagpipers set up, there'll be some finger foods there, and if you'd like to tell a story.
At the fire station?
Not here, God, no. It'll be at the Williamsport Fire Department, just because this place is a disaster. I couldn't get it cleaned up in time. So I would ask that everybody come and show their respects, even if it's only for a couple minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The 26th of this month? Yeah, it's on the Sunday, 1 to 4.
Larry, if I could, so I wanted to thank Chief Little, he gave Mr. Pointer and I a tour of the facility, and we had a great time with yourself and Mr. Routzen, and you're doing some real good stuff over there, you really are, it's very impressive. And he explained a little bit about the fire territory to both of us since we're newer council members and we weren't, weren't quite aware of everything. And, and then also, we even talked about some EMS stuff as well, and there's, I think he's doing such a great job that it provides other opportunities for the city of Attica to take a look at, and we can talk more about that later, but want to thank you for.
Your tour.
Yeah, the tour.
My pleasure.
Yep.
Okay, this is Brudwater. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. We tabled the 2026 salary ordinance from the September meeting, and everybody should have a copy of that. Uh, we tabled the 2026 salary ordinance from the September meeting and everybody should have a copy of that. Bearing, bearing in mind that if we don't pass the, the, uh, budget, this is an all void.
So which one do you want to pass first?
I guess it doesn't matter.
Uh, I've reviewed the, uh, the salary ordinance and, uh, I, I don't have a, a, a problem with it. And, uh, so I'll make a motion to approve it.
A motion to approve. Does everybody have a chance to look at it? And do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
All abstain.
Okay, that everybody's an eye, but one abstention.
And that's ordinance number 2025 1013A.
Well, I did have one question. I was going to ask Chief Little. Uh, Chief, I noticed that, uh, while every, all the other departments received a 4% increase, you declined, uh, to give a 4% uh, increase to the fire departments and.
We received the 4% increase on our end. It, it did grow 4%. We just moved it throughout the other.
Oh, it's kind of baked in. It's baked in.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the reason why you said that. Okay, all right, gotcha.
Ours just kind of automatically just kind of, you know, grows a little bit.
Okay.
Submitted to the state to retrieve it.
I think he was referring to the salaries review and the.
Right. Like I said, if we did receive it, however, we decided to put it elsewhere. We also moved, we also moved it to where now we're paying the volunteers per run. So.
Oh, okay.
As far as like mine and the other part-time people, yeah, we moved it somewhere else.
Okay.
Joanne?
Yeah, cause Joanne had mentioned something in an email and I, I wasn't sure. So, okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the budget ordinance or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. And it looks like this one requires a signature from everybody. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
I vote to don't vote. It looks good to me. I, I make a motion. We approve the budget.
I'll second.
A motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
And. I'm right on your way down.
We'll use yours?
Sure.
Okay.
No, that works. Thank you. And I do have one more budget item here when we get done with this. I need to correct, the correction.
And that's 2025 1013B. You are marking next to that if you voted in favor of the verdict. Thank you.
Chief Little, will that, for Ed O'Farrell, will that be at 4:00 PM when you do the last call?
Yeah, so the, the whole, uh, celebration night will be from one to four, but on that final hour, we will do the last call.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just a few weeks ago, we hired the position that was approved last September for the help for Eric, the, to do the, uh, building inspections. And that was to be at $30 an hour, no more than 30 hours a week with no benefits. And I went back over all the, the council minutes and I went back and actually watched the meetings. And we talked about it many, many times and, and I even remember putting it on the ordinance for last year. But if you remember, and I know you guys weren't here, but if you remember right, there was many iterations of the salary ordinance last year because we weren't going to give a raise. And then we were going to give this raise and then we were going to give that raise. And we were going to take money from the police department and give it to somebody else. Bottom line is it got dropped off and it never got put on the 2025 salary ordinance. So I would like to amend the 2025 salary ordinance to reflect the $30 an hour, just like it's reading on our, the one we just passed because we did hire that position.
We got to finish out the year basically.
We got to finish out the year.
I make a motion that we do that.
I'll second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And Ingrid can take care of that for us and thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Very much. Annexation, uh, I've been talking with, uh, all the parties involved and, and I reached out to the one on the west side of the highway south of town. I have not heard back from him. He's been sent the paperwork. Uh, so no, no progress on the annexation right now. Ambulance relocation process, um, I had heard from the, and some of you may know this. I heard from the school system that they have declined to offer the property that we asked for across from the old football field. Uh, in order to keep that property intact for a potential developer. Uh, I reached out to a local business here in town that had a area that would have been ideal as well. And they also, they were hopeful, hopeful at first, but then they decided that they may want to develop that into retail property. So they declined. Uh, we're, we're kind of running out of logical places. I've talked to some of you one-on-one about this. Uh, right now, our most promising places, uh, that we already own. And I make it clear, we do not have the money to buy property elsewhere. It's either got to be city-owned property or it's got to be property that somebody's going to donate. And it has to be in close proximity to the highway. So with that being said, uh, we own property out behind tractor supply. I think that is, there's a two acre plot there. Uh, I think that is probably the most promising place as of today. Uh, I want to reiterate that they're not going to turn on their sirens back close to a residential neighborhood. Uh, in fact, they make runs back there almost daily to Autumn Trace down that same lane and, and back to the back door at Autumn Trace. So, uh, I don't think anybody's going to see anything any differently than what they currently do, uh, before people start throwing red flags up. But I, I think we're coming to a quick point here where if we keep saying we don't want it near our house, that it may end up in Beatersburg. And I certainly don't want that. I, I don't want the ambulance going back to Beatersburg because people in Attica don't want it here. Or at least don't want it close to their house.
Well, Larry, you and I talked and of course I think the riverfront is still a great opportunity as well. And if we were to put the facility down there, then it could go right next to where the, uh, the restaurants are. And, uh, we would have presence 24/7 down there, which would solve some bathroom issues and, uh, other things. And it would start the development process on the riverfront. Um, and I personally would like to see it there. I know that there's concerns about deploying the ambulances if the trains are there. But again, with the technology, my gosh, I mean, if I were to do something from Amazon, I know where that package is and when it's going to be delivered. So I would think that we could coordinate activities with, uh, Norfolk, Norfolk Southern.
So there's no way you could do that. They're controlled by the federal government. You can't, you can't really, how many times have we had?
Amazon's probably a lot more relaxed.
How many times have we had traffic backed up everywhere from them being stuck on the tracks?
Yeah.
And they, we can't do anything about it.
Well, but, but at least you would know about it though. That's what I'm saying because then you can roll the wheels if you need to, if they need to be on the other side of the tracks.
Two things, floodplains and on the wrong side of the tracks.
Well, I, I think that we have to deal with the floodplain issue in the riverfront anyways at some point in time if we're going to develop it.
Not a good place for an ambulance. Still the wrong side of the tracks.
I, I think the most logical place is close to Autumn Trace. I mean, and, and I've put it as close to Autumn Trace as we could away from the neighborhoods. Uh, cause that's where they go. Like you said, that's where a lot of their runs are anyway. But I know there's some people not like that either, but it really needs to be on this side of the tracks just from what we've dealt with.
Close to the highway, big, nice, wide open road.
Well, and, and I think one, something else that we should consider is actually the old building as well. Um, I, I think there's some talk that, um, Eric's guys would get that, but I, I don't know what they're getting and that, that'll hunk it, whatever. So I was thinking that could there be money baked into the whole deal for, uh, uh, new, new digs for those guys down there as well, uh, at the city? Um, to where it could all be done at the same time when they move out.
I, 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 I don't disagree, but when, when you're talking about baking money and I, I, I'm worried how we're going to pay the bills in 2027 with, uh, with this Senate Bill one going through. Uh, you know, our, our general budget's going to get cut 64% unless something changes between now and then. And I pray that it does because if it doesn't, we're going to be forced to make some very serious and not popular cuts. Uh, a- and, and even then, I, I don't think those cuts are going to be enough. I, I think that you're going to see water and you're going to see sewer continue because those are self-supporting. But everything else is maybe on the chopping block unless something changes. And, and I know that, you know, people have applauded these tax cuts, property tax cuts and, and it's a great thing. But I think when they see what the effects of that are going to be to the local communities, uh, then they change their mind. Because, you know, we're, we're talking about having to cut our budget by over half. And we don't have that much fluff in our budget. We, we have maybe a few hundred thousand dollars that, that we could cut that still wouldn't be popular. You know, you're talking about more money for the parks. Uh, those are things that unfortunately would probably be at the top of the list to cut, like the summer park program. Nobody wants to see that go away. Uh, you know, I, I've received multiple calls over, over. My sticks didn't get picked up out of my front yard because you guys are only picking them up once a month instead of every week. And what happens if there's, they're not getting picked up at all because Eric doesn't have enough guys to go pick them up or gas to put in the vehicles to, to go. This could get very, very serious. And I, I don't know that I can reiterate this enough, that we may not have money to, to pay salaries, let alone add cost to anything.
Well, I, I think that we have to be aggressive and start to develop other, other.
We do.
Other, other revenue lines for the city just in case. And, uh, that's one of the reasons why I think the riverfront is wide open and, um, and that we should consider that as a location.
Where, where would I get the money to raise the levy up high enough to raise the, the?
I don't know if it needs to be. I don't know that it needs to be. That floodline goes right in front of Hanthorn's house right there. And, um, and, and we've already done, when Duane was mayor, we did.
I've personally seen that river up to the, to the, to the railroad tracks behind your property. That could cause serious. I personally seen that by my lifetime.
I know it was back in the eighties, but I remember we had like a flood like nobody had. I mean, Covington, I, I was working at Covington IGA then and.
I, I certainly wouldn't want to be the guy, the, the mayor that built the, the ambulance down there and had it flooded.
Well, I mean, if, but, but the AT&amp;T facility's down, or the tower's down there and so that's going to get, that's going to get flooded out too. So we're going to lose all communication if that happens.
Eric, you had something?
Yeah, you, you kind of want to look at the elevation. I'm pretty sure that the reason those bathrooms are elevated so high is so that they were out of the floodline. So that's how much of her you would have to bring in to essentially.
I s- yeah, I still would want it on the other side.
Yeah, they, they still have to deal with the tracks to deal with.
Should have to get approval to do that.
Yeah, yeah, they would have to.
Yeah, DNR.
DNR would have to.
DNR and Army Corps.
Whatever, yeah. Okay, we didn't want to belabor this too long.
Just.
Tim, Kimpo.
I like your ideas, but remember the whole goal of moving animals. And that is to avoid the trains because that has been a problem for many years. And there's really no control of it. And kind of think about this, when that train's crossed, you lose Warren County to come over. And this one will take you 12 to 13 minutes from Beatersburg to come up there. So.
Has to be on the east side of the track.
Well, I thought that one of the reasons was it was just an aging facility.
It is. It's, it's a bad shit.
I thought that that was the main reason.
That's for the reason, but the, the whole goal was to get it on this side of the track.
And, and I can't remember one time while I was mayor that Norfolk and Southern contacted me and said, hey, we're going to have a train stranded there.
Just so you know.
They were, they were about to pass two stoplights.
I will say this on my experience on the ambulance service, we tried that many, many times. And I know when Ed O'Farrell was fire chief, or Chief Little's done it too. They're not going to work with us on it because they don't have to. And they're not going to. It's like.
But they have.
There's a timeline all that is supposed to be there too, correct?
They've got to have tractor devices on these things. They've got to still find them.
Sometimes ADM thinks it's coming and it doesn't come for three or four days.
That's true.
Yeah. So it's just east side of the track. That's what I'm saying.
I'm all for putting up there my tractor supply. I.
I found one.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
One problem with that location and one and one alone. Everything irons out great with it, but when you come out there, Taco Bell's got their dumpster sitting there with that big concrete wall. And you got an inch out there to kind of look around it, you know, but that's the only, only negative. And if they had, I thought about that because I, after you said that the other day, I drove, I drove up, you could, they could actually go out. If they, if they were stuck, they could go out through tractor, uh, tractor supplies.
And they're joined, yeah.
And pull out because they're joined. There's a lane that goes from back there.
And it's still wide, pretty wide.
Yeah, they could, they could go out that way if they had to.
Yeah. And, and Larry, you and I talked about something else and this is before Jimmy and I were on. But, uh, uh, one of the issues is that, uh, when, when the city has to contract the work to be done, uh, they have a whole different set of standards and everything that they have to apply to. And so you're, you're looking squarely at a 1.3 million dollar building. But we do have some people that, you know, could possibly take on building the building and then lease it back to the city. That would maybe allow us to have this at a lot lesser cost and we could lease back to eventually own it. Now, we, that's, that is a possibility, right?
I, I don't know that it's not. I mean, if, if you're staring at a, at a $750,000 OCR grant to, to get it built, uh, without having to pay that back versus somebody else building it and leasing it back. Uh, I, I think, I haven't done the math. My gut tells me that you'd be money ahead just to build new and, and own it rather than have.
Is, is, have we been given the grant? Is it done? Is it?
It is not done, uh, but, but I've talked to Christie and it sounds like that, that it's moving forward and she sees no reason why we won't get it. Uh, we probably won't get it this year, but it's probably going to come next year. So it's, it, it, there's a good chance we will get it.
But we can't do anything until that happens then.
No, no, but we better have a location picked and, and ready to, ready to move on it when, when the time comes. So, well, we don't need to belabor tonight, but I wanted to give everybody an update on, on where we were at. And, uh, you know, the other, the other, I, I've driven this town several times looking for, for a spot. And the other logical location, and it isn't as adjacent to the highway, but it's where the old city hall used to sit down the street here. And, and I thought you could build there. There's not, there wouldn't be a lot of parking area, but you could put doors on the Mill Street side and drive out the main street side. So you'd come out on the main, but you'd still have to drive through a residential neighborhood or turn and go through downtown uh, to get out to the highway, which isn't as good. Uh, you know, I, I even drove up through Ravine Park and, and looked up by the pickleball courts where the old. Uh, and I don't like that because you're going to drive through residential neighborhoods. People aren't going to like that either.
No, those roads aren't really very wide.
No, no, no. And then, and then somebody mentioned, well, what about out by the, the cemetery? Well, that's, that's good, you know, because close to the Badlands and they could get in out there if they had to. But, uh, now you're going to drive down Perry Street, which is residential neighborhood, semis. You got, uh, it, it's just.
It's a heavy traffic road anyway right now.
There's no really good place. And this is, this is adjacent to the highway and it's close to Autumn Trace and, and to me, it's almost a no-brainer.
Larry, there's a building over here, um, right next to the fire department. Um, they're just right over here.
The one the church owns.
The church owns it? Are they doing anything with it?
We've talked about that. I know.
Right?
I know. The chiefs talked to them at several different times.
So I tried to purchase that, uh, prior to the expansion. Uh, and they had no intention of ever selling it. Currently they're using it for like AA meetings, blood drives. I think it's not used often how. Think it's not used often, however, they still are using it. It's not a piece of property that they want to get rid of, which I understand.
It would be a good spot.
Could we, could the city trade, could we trade, uh, properties? Would they be open to that?
I don't know. They, they, they probably like it because it's right next door to the church.
Yeah, that was kinda their other thing. One area on it and it's right next to the church. So if they wanna have some other event, it's just right there. So. I, I was very serious about buying it and attaching it to the fire station.
That would have been nice.
That, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it would have been a nice situation. City cleanup, October seventeenth and eighteenth, the football team's gonna help out with that again. Uh, as of today, I don't think I have any applications for. The fire, or fire, the football team to come by and pick anything up, which is kinda odd. Maybe, maybe that everybody's got all the stuff out that they need to get out, but, uh, need to get those in. Like in the next day or two, if, uh, if you're wanting something hauled out. Uh, I will be out of the office on Friday, the seventeenth. And unavailable, but, uh, I'm sure that if you drop them off and they come by and pick them up, right? Clerk's office will make sure they get them.
Larry, is there any chance to get a, a, a tire, a tire drop off, um, set up at some point in time?
I think the county's working on it.
Fountain County's got one scheduled. I think it's November or something.
That's what we talked about.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have to get a date on that.
Cause I mean, that'd be good. I think that's, that's important. I know that Tepi County had one. You could, uh, it was basically twenty tires per resident and, uh, the first two thousand tires and then it's over.
I don't know that they've put a cap on this one down here, but I, I don't, I do think they said. Like four, I wanna say four tires, but per person or something like that.
Are they gonna have electronics drop off on this one too?
We will have electronics this time here in town and we will have scrap metal. Uh, that's worked out fairly well because they charge us for electronics, but scrap metal they pay us for. So the more scrap metal we can throw in the tub, the, the more it offsets the cost of the, of the electronics. Uh, just so everybody knows, you still have to have a, a current water bill and I D to prove you're from Attica so you're not hauling stuff in from. Other areas and, and that's worked out well too. We've reduced the, the overall. Cost of that by, by doing that. You know, it's not fair for the citizens.
They see a pretty big dropper, do you know, as far as.
They said it was quite a bit, yeah.
Not surprised.
Yeah, but we had people hauling stuff from everywhere. It was, it was way, way out of hand, unfortunately. Uh, Riverfront Park, uh. I, I already mentioned last meeting that that material is on order. It's, it's due here in mid-November. They are going to install it. For that price. So the city guys won't have to deal with that. They will install it in November unless it's unseasonably cold and snowing and bad out. So that'll be installed in November and then we'll plan a dedication ceremony sometime early spring when the weather breaks. I know Nate's been planning on a plaque or something for that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from, from the family or anything, so.
We'll have to reach out to them.
Have to reach out to them and see if there's what they have in mind and we'll get something done.
Is, is the Parks Department involved in that also, Larry?
They are not. They, they helped pick the, the, uh. Equipment and, and reviewed the list of equipment, but I, I've kinda taken that on myself, not. To belabor them with, with anything other than we like this or we like that. Uh, we, we had a company that was gonna supply the equipment, but they were fifty thousand dollars for installation. We found a, a local, not a local company, but an Indiana company that was considerably cheaper and we got a discount from them. And that got the price down to where we can get an installed price for the same amount. Uh, the dog park, uh, I had reached out to a couple of places looking for fencing estimates. I honestly don't think we're gonna get. Fencing for fifteen thousand dollars for, for what we had planned. Uh, i- if you remember down at the riverfront, we had two different areas. One for big dogs and one for little dogs and it was a fairly good sized area. And, uh, I, I don't see any way that we're gonna fence in that area for fifteen thousand dollars.
I, you know, we, we talked about this and, and I even talked to Eli a little bit about it as well. And, um, the, the Parks, the Parks, uh, Board felt like they just had this given to them. It wasn't their idea. And they're like, here, try to deal with it the best you can. And so, um, they're kinda feeling that it was all ill-conceived a little bit and, um, and definitely under budget. And, uh, kinda looking at it as well. I think a dog park's great and even two of them, maybe at one Ravine Park and one at the Riverfront. But again, it's like we're, we're not seeing a lot of success with this effort. Because we have no champions and we have no buy-in and the budget is under, it's underfunded. And, um, I think we have to pull the whole, I personally recommend that we pull the whole thing back and, and reevaluate the approach to it. I, I think that everybody's, we're just kinda, it's a, it's a mess.
Certainly a bigger apple to eat than what I originally thought it was.
And originally, we all had good intentions because we had a, I can't remember what kind of a loan it was called.
General Obligation.
General Obligation Bond and, uh, it was seven hundred thousand dollars. We had different ideas, including an amphitheater down there, but that was also right, right after twenty twenty and everything just skyrocketed. So we were lucky to get pickleball courts and help with that. I mean, as far as that goes, but.
Well, and there's so much stuff's come up with this dog park. All the regu- I mean, you really have to.
And back then we had a council member that was very passionate about getting a dog park and, and we included that in the, in the process.
Which is not wrong. It's just, I, you know, having, having a dog park's not wrong. I just, uh, I just think that we gotta.
You really gotta keep an eye, you gotta pretty much regulate the animals and make sure that they're registered and that they don't have any. Some of these infectious diseases.
There's a wide range of things that, you know, you can go from West Lafayette where they give you an R F I D to get in and your dogs have to have. All these shots and, and prove doesn't have parvo and, and it, it's very elaborate. Where I, I drove down to Rockville here several weeks ago, took pictures of theirs and I, and I think I passed that around, but. They have no regulations. It's use at your own risk. And I've had several people tell me in the community, I ain't taking my dog there. I don't wanna risk getting parvo or the, the.
Eli, do you have, what do you think? What, what's the Parks Board, uh, position on this?
There's just a lot of extra things that came up that we didn't think about originally.
Right.
And, uh, just kinda, we thought it would be kinda easy, but it was not.
I, I, I think personally, I don't think it's something we have to have right now. We haven't had one and. People still take their dogs down to the park for walks or whatever. I mean, it's not.
Well, and, you know, honestly, we have probably more acres of park than most places have. And, uh, you know, like you said, you can take your dog and, and walk it on a lot of those acres. The only difference is, I guess, that you, this way you could take your dog and turn it loose and.
Right.
And let it run in there, but.
Eli, if, uh, what could the Parks Department do with fifteen thousand?
Um, well, we could really use it for the installation of the, the elementary school equipment. That's kind of what we're looking at right now.
I make the motion that we, uh, change the purpose of the fifteen thousand dollar dog park because. Uh, it's clearly out of budget, out of scope, um, from the original thoughts. And we reappropriate that money for the Parks Department to, uh, put it to good use as, as, uh, for the. Reimplementation of the, uh. Playground equipment.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. We'll move that money over to the Parks Department. Merry Christmas, Eli.
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
Um, so what about, since this is going down by the riverfront and we mentioned earlier it's flooding. So what if all that gets like washed out and then like we just wasted money on that?
Could happen.
Yeah, typically when that floods down there, the, 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 and this is his story because I'm an old man. But the Wabash River Bridge, the road going across the river kinda acts as a barrier. So you don't have a lot of current through there. It's not going to wash anything out. You may end up, it's flooded and you may end up with water where you don't want water. And you may end up with some corn stalks and things like that. If, say you had a fence there, it might be covered with corn stalks, but it's probably not gonna take it out. It's just going to flood it. And in this area where we're talking about putting the kids' park at, uh, is up in a higher elevation there. Uh, oh, like I said, I have seen that flooded.
I mean, I've heard from, uh, family members about it, like being up by the river.
Yeah, and those, those houses down there, the one house that's still standing down there, if you look, you can see pictures of water. Halfway up on that house back in, that was nineteen thirteen, you know, that was a hundred years ago.
And that's what they talk about is hundred year floods, but they can happen.
Yeah, it could happen tomorrow, it could happen next year.
That's why you have insurance though.
Yeah.
I've seen like that one farmer's like cornfield just be flooded out and then like across the road from that, like the weeds and stuff all flooded out.
Yeah, yeah. So we're not saying it won't happen. That's why they won't let you build down there.
Yeah.
We can put a park there.
But again, hopefully we can get some restroom action. It'll be open for the kids because they're gonna need it.
Yeah, yeah. And, and Eric and I have had several discussions about the time locks and things down here. Eric?
The, the restrooms have been open all this time. Matter of fact, today called the police department. Because now we're getting the homeless people staying inside there. They have a portable space heater set up inside the man's beer cans everywhere.
Preyed on.
It shouldn't be, but if we're patrolling, they'll get caught, correct? I mean, I understand.
You guys don't go up and check on those bathrooms? Make sure nobody's in them at night?
I mean. I, I mean, if we're patrolling like we should.
I'm telling you. I, I think you should put porta potties down there because I was playing pickleball Sunday and. I seen two people stop and go use the porta potties and then drive off. They weren't there to do anything else.
Well, it's a good idea to have them down there, but we, there's still some irony now that has to be done. I think in order to keep it open on a basis, the time locks, I think serve some purpose, but. We get homeless people to figure that out and go in there.
Then you've got people down there camping, you know, if I go down, if I pay to go down there and camp and there's no bathroom.
I'm not happy. If I down there, I'll go somewhere. They've been open for three weeks down there and.
It, it is definitely different.
Yeah.
There, there's a lot more cleanup, a lot more debris, um, a lot more things that, you know, get damaged.
Yeah, it shouldn't be.
Same as, you know, we're being parked pavilion. Uh, somebody's went in there and ripped the toilet paper. Dispenser's completely off the wall and, uh, we've said we changed probably. Four sinks in there this, this summer.
This is why we don't have those things.
I know.
I mean, I've like been down to the river and like some mornings, there's like at least eight person that's down there sitting under the pavilion. I've seen that same person this morning out back at County Market just sitting on like. Milk crates.
Who you talking about? I've seen that same kind too.
Yeah, I think I do too.
And the police department did patrol that every hour and there's, they're, they're still gonna get in there and tear up stuff.
Yeah, but they'll be caught too. So you, I mean.
No, that is not true. That is a false statement. And, and I think, I think you need to take some time and, and go ride with our officers on night shift, our one officer that we have on night shift. And, and see their convoy and that they handle throughout and, and their patrol tactics. Because I feel like you're shortening, shorting my officers and their patrol techniques, but, but what you're saying is not accurate.
I've got a guy that works for me. He's been on the auxiliary force for twenty-nine years and he did a night, he worked a night shift till midnight.
Then he ought to be able to tell you that because you could sit down there and you could go through that park every hour. And within an hour, you could roll in there and water be shooting out of the bathroom and, and no sight of anybody.
That's true.
It happens quite frequently.
If they're patrolling in town, they'll be caught.
Well, there's a difference between patrolling and babysitting.
I understand. I'm not saying babysit.
I think in order to have them, you're gonna have to have some, an attendant down there and.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And I, I find that.
EMS facility down there.
If they're on a time deal, like I say, they still should be probably shut up at a certain point. I agree and open back up.
We, we've navigated this bathroom issue for years.
If I've, like I said, somebody's in there destroying the sink, I think at some point they would. And like I say, maybe the outside camera seeing them coming in, maybe not inside the restroom, but see who comes in and out. Eventually we can be looking for that person.
Yeah.
But there, I agree.
Are there cameras down there?
I assume some trail cams would be.
Yeah, trail cams. I mean, I understand and.
I haven't, I haven't thought about just some signings that says, wow, you're on camera.
Exactly.
You know, and, and at least you're, oh. Maybe I shouldn't do this.
I don't think.
Until they get away with it, then they say, well, they're not paid attention.
Isn't this something that we could give to the, the Parks Board and let them take care of it?
No.
I mean, they, we're, we're, it's happening within the parks, right?
Yeah, but they're not gonna be the park police.
No.
I think there's a bigger issue at hand here. That the city is starting to see a larger, or an increase of homeless people coming here and sleeping under the bridge. And it's nothing that the police are doing because I can tell you for a fact, these guys bust their butts on. Getting drugs off the street, stopping people left and right, patrolling like they should. It's, we as a city need to start sitting down like, okay, how are we gonna combat the homelessness coming here? Not that they don't need a place to go, however. We're gonna end up like a bigger city like Lafayette. I'll tell you right now, but it's just everywhere. We don't get to have it now, we're gonna have a bigger issue.
And I think every community is seeing an uptake in this problem. Um, it's, but especially out here in west central Indiana, we don't have the facilities like a Lafayette, West Lafayette to. Combat them and, and you know, we, we have access to a lot of, I have things surrounding us, but getting them there, you know, it's.
So are we talking like a, a drug intervention program or are we talking about like, um, you know, a place to sleep?
At the trap and release?
You'd be amazed if, if the trains gets to move through the twenty, uh, the highway twenty-eight corridor. That stop hanging Attica for two, three, four days until we. Kinda put enough pressure on them to, they keep, keep going.
I can tell you this, we just last week had a trespassing individual who is a homeless person who started at Johnny's house. And then got booted out of there and had nowhere to go. And then I have him trespassing because he's harassing all the workers and following them around town and screaming at them. So it's, it's becoming an issue and we need to start addressing that issue, not the police patrolling that. Because I'm telling you right now, they do a hell of a job patrolling the city and keeping us safe. Uh, so we need to be looking at the bigger picture.
So you think that the, the, the problems that we're encountering down there are homelessness, the homeless, homeless or transients?
We haven't had this, we haven't had this big of an issue in bathrooms and everything else being destroyed until we started seeing an uptick in. The homelessness population growing. Not saying none of it ever happened before, but it was a very minute issue compared to what it is now.
And don't get me wrong, we're, we're, we're still gonna have our young individuals within side of the community that get bored and they go on a random act and. Gotta be, gotta learn a lesson as we grow to adults. We're always, every community's gonna have that. The transients and homeless that move through this community, uh, as well as a lot of the little communities in, in the area. Come and go, but they hide very well. They, they can, they can hide and, and be unfound to be in an area for longer than a person.
So then basically we had the symptoms, okay? We had the symptoms of the, the restrooms being destroyed and all this. And, uh, but now we've identified the problem. Okay, so this is the first time, you know, you know, you guys are saying this is a problem. So now what we have to do is define or come up with an answer. So how do we do that? I mean, that's where we're at right now. That's what you're saying. We, we need to come up with a, a, an answer. So.
Well, it's not gonna be an issue that you solve overnight, I can tell you that. I mean, it's gonna take.
Well, talking about it in the right way.
We need to start talking about it. That's, that's the thing.
Starting the conversation.
As the city grows the way we want, you're gonna start seeing more of this. You're gonna start seeing other things. So if we start talking about now, maybe we can combat it earlier than later and.
But, you know, even talking about the investment in, in a camera system, if, if this is one of our trains it's moving through.
We're not gonna get them.
You may never see them again and they're not, the assets that we have to identify those people or we can't use those assets. For, uh, uh, a broken station.
Especially if it's not a local person that, oh, I know who that is.
Right, right.
But, but having a camera there though and having a sign down there saying this is.
Oh, I think that's a sure concern.
That's a big deterrent and, um, you know, kinda thing.
But, but also, also taking that camera footage, you know, over the course of a, a thirty to forty-five minute period. Five people. But, but also, also taking that camera footage, you know, over the course of a, a thirty to forty five minute period, five people walked in there. Who did it?
Yeah, well, well, at least you got to narrow down.
Who done it?
Yeah, who done it? Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And you almost have to have a, a real camera because once somebody does it and nothing happens, they're gonna know it's dummy camera. Nobody's gonna pay attention.
Right.
The old Attica pool property has been, uh, surveyed and pinned. Uh, so we can work on transferring that property over to Attica Rec Inc. Uh, it's gonna be written to where if anything changes with their status, that that's gonna revert back to the city of Attica.
Yes, yeah, we'll find a way to do that.
Do we know how big that square is, Larry?
I do. I've got a copy of it in my office if you want to see it.
Does it go, how far, does it go all the way up the hill or?
It goes all the way up the hill to RMC's fence. And it was easier to do it that way. And they're looking at possibly putting in a, a slide on the hill. That could be utilized both winter and summer. I don't really have been to any of their meetings or not, but, uh, they've got some, some pretty creative ideas. I hope they can come to fruition. Uh, you know, they're talking about adding on to the building, uh, around the bottom of that hill. And, uh, having like a recreation room there where people can go work out. Uh, and they could do that on a subscription basis to where they can recoup some money to do that. They're talking about maybe, uh, adding a commercial kitchen there so that there can be, uh, events held there. Uh, dinners and things.
And that tie it with pickleball.
Yeah, yeah, and, and they can use that for the concession stand for pickleball and other things in the park. There can, there can be restrooms there for a bit, uh, you know, available in the park that are a little bit nicer than a porta potty. If they have an event there. So they've got a lot of good ideas. I'm, I'm hoping that they can move along. They're, they're working hard to get grants. Uh, the grant funding will come a little easier, I think, once that they own the property and they can apply for grants through their. Five oh one three C? C three, is it C three or three C? Yeah, I always get that backwards. Um, but anyway, that's, that's moving along. Uh, it's a pretty good chunk of, because it runs from the road. Clear up on both sides of the pool to the, you know, up the hill to that fence. You know, and I, I envision the city probably still having to mow that hillside and, and all that until they, they develop it into something, but we're mowing it today.
Would that be shown on Beacon?
I don't know whether they filed that with the county yet or not, or it would show up on Beacon. That would look there. So just an update on that. So that's moving forward. Um, do we have anything ready for permit fees for sites along state right of way?
That will go to the APC first and so they'll hear it in November and then it'll come up with the council and the senator.
Okay, thank you. And everybody remembers that, right? That's because, okay. Uh, health insurance update, uh, open enrollment begins October fifteenth. And AIM will be here that day for question and answer session regarding the two plans offered. And I think they're gonna be here at, is it three o'clock? Do you remember?
It's three thirty, but I can.
Okay.
I'm gonna send out a reminder.
Okay, but they'll be here to answer questions if anybody's got any questions about the health insurance. Uh, we did offer a PPO plan this year as well as the high deductible. Uh, there's only a dollar or so difference between the two plans on your out of pocket costs between the two, uh, for the employees. So, uh, I, I think it's gonna be up to them which, which plan best fits their family's needs. But, uh, I know there was people wanting a PPO last year and, and we didn't get it. So this year they've got it. So we'll see how many people take which plan this year. There was no increase in cost, so that's good.
Yeah, that's the thing all the time.
Uh, new business, uh, Nate might be able to expand on this a little bit, but, uh, we have had some complaints and on the truck route. There's a guy down, Eric, help me out, which street that is? Is that Yon? That where they make the turn down there, they kind of go over into the grass. Uh, coming back across the truck route, back up to Perry Street, and that's been ongoing. Uh, and I, I was scratching my head trying to figure out why trucks would be even going that way, you know? Because originally when we laid out the truck route, it was to get to C and D and back out to the highway. But with the, with the harvest coming on and, and there's a lot of grain trucks which are shorter, you know? They, they don't require the turning radius that, uh, some of the bigger trucks that go to C and D do, but, uh, they, they've been coming across. Sixth street over to, to Brady and, uh, causing some neighbors to not like it. Uh, so they called, the lady actually came out to one of the trucks the other day and yelled at one of the truck drivers. And asked him why he wasn't using the truck route. And, uh, so Nate called me and, and we talked and, and I said, you know, for, for now, uh, I, I think. I'm not too hung up on not going down in front of Pizza King, but they need to not go down through the two hundred block because that's where it narrows down. So they've been hauling grain down, uh, from Perry Street to Maine and then turning up Maine. And then coming up here to McDonald Park and turning, hitting the highway there. And I, I see a dozen of them a day sitting in the office going up and down Maine and, and it doesn't seem to be a problem that way. For the grain trucks, I, I don't think that's how we want C and D batteries trucks to go, but. Uh, when you're hauling grain from out Riverside Independence area and bringing it into town, you don't have a lot of options to get from point A to point B. So I, I think the problem is, you haven't heard any more, have you? I, I think.
No, it's been, been resolved for the most part, obviously, for the moment anyway.
The only thing that, that I, I talked to Eric about and I've, I've got it on here too, but, um. We may have to make some changes down at Main and Third, like, uh, in front of Tom O'Connor's old office.
Pretty tight.
It's when they try to make that turn there, if there's cars parked in front of the, the old attorney's office, which is not being used now. Uh, it's really tight. I, I was coming, uh, out of Boudreaux's here a few weeks ago and saw a guy trying to make that turn. He had to back up and make a couple of hitches at it. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't change our parking along that street to include no parking in front of. Right directly in front of the lawyer's office there, maybe down to Johnny's house, uh, just to allow more turning there. Uh, I don't know that we have to do it tonight, but, uh, maybe if you guys want to look at it or something and then come back and make a recommendation. Or if you've already looked at it, I don't know. So was running stationary patrol today at the BP and looking for distracted driving. It just so happened that a commercial vehicle pulled up, um, northbound on Council. And I saw him navigating his phone. Well, I could see into his cab, he was navigating directions. So as he crossed over, um, twenty eight to, to come over to Main Street, I'm like, well, I'm just gonna get behind him and let's see where he goes. Let's see where this, see where this goes. Third's left on, on Main goes down, uh, kinda must have been nat, trying to navigate again how to get into C and Bs. Cause they got the back, they got the north dock as well. So they're turning on third to go back to the north dock. Or they got the dock in the curve just north of Eric's shop. Um, as we approached, as he did some whatever he was doing. We, we proceeded on across and in front of Boudreaux's. Uh, there just happened to be another semi southbound on third coming up to Main Street. I'm like, ooh, this is gonna get entertaining here. Let's just pull off to the side of the road and see how these guys navigate this to see what they've been doing. Because a lot of those drivers are probably coming in there multiple times a week on routes. Um, it just so happened that the truck that I was following continued to the south dock in the South Gate entrance. The truck that was coming south on third was turning on our track, truck route to go around and, and get back out of town. Um, noticeable problems there because there was not gonna be in, with, with vehicles parked. On the north side of Maine as well as the south side in front of Boudreaux's. There were also oncoming vehicles eastbound as the semi was coming. So we started a congested area because he couldn't get over enough to get around even the vehicle that was east of third. As vehicles were coming. And then if, if he would have been going to the north dock, the truck coming southbound from, from the north dock, uh, would have created some more congestion. So I think as we evaluate this, we might want to look even further with our parking on the north side of Main Street. To both sides of Maine instead of just. On, on, on third, you know, we don't want anything parked on the east side because we're guiding them to that truck route. But with cars parked on the south side, if they're coming, they're gonna go east to go back east via our truck route. Um, and vehicles are parked on that side, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna run into some issues. And I got to see those first thing in the day. Cindy, you had your hand up first.
Would you please, uh, just go back on why the truck route was changed to begin with?
Truck route was changed to begin with because we wanted to make the downtown more pedestrian friendly. And we added the bump outs down there, put pair, or put the angle parking in in front of the two hundred block. Uh, you know, the, the, we didn't want the downtown to be a drag strip, if you will, through town for every semi farm truck, whatever.
But you have the stop signs now.
We have stop signs. We have.
Every stop.
And it's, it's very narrow though and with those bump outs. Uh, that, if you'll notice, there's a lot of black on those bump outs down there where tires have already.
But it wasn't supposed to be narrow though, right? It wasn't supposed to be, okay, I, I, I forgot, but I totally understood.
It's still, it's, it's still two lanes wide, but you don't have that extra room that you had before. And in the winter time, or if you're making a turn down there on the one, you can't see. I, even my truck, my pickup truck, I can't see that curb when I'm making the turn. I know it's there, so I give myself a little bit of extra room, but, but that's why. And if we get the market down there and, and get everything going, I, I, I get it that you, you probably want to make it more pedestrian friendly rather than. A thoroughfare.
So is there, is there a reason why they don't go down to Third Street?
To tonight. From.
In turn, right, to go down to C and D?
That would, that would, that's the best route, but you gotta, you, you got drivers that are coming from maybe the east coast or something and they're just. They're searching around and looking to see what their best route to get in there. Um, you know, C and D could help out a lot with, probably with a meeting with that on, on talking to their carriers. And I've, I've sent them.
It just seems like less.
The truck route maps, I've sent them, but e- every, every time I've talked to them or, or anything, it's always. We get different trucks in here from different places all the time and it's not the same guy coming here every week. Then we probably, if we want to, you know, I'm gonna say coming down Maine to Third, then going north. Then turning left to go into their north dock. Because we're dealing with the issues that they can't stay on the picket road.
They won't be able to make that corner probably.
It's a tight corner.
They won't be able to make that corner.
With semi came out of it today. So, I mean, I watch.
Have the house hanging on the back of it?
No.
They're gonna, they're probably gonna go in, they won't stay on the, the blacktop, is what I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah, and that's part of the problem down there. That, that, that one fellow's house there, they keep getting over into the grass and.
Ideal me to be just right down Main Street, right straight into C and D. And that's my ideal.
But you gotta get to the north dock.
Yeah, I was gonna say they, maybe they can, hey, we're only going out to south dock today, guys.
A lot, a lot of the other traffic is semi grain haulers that's fall and spring. Not going to C and D, yeah. And I even suggested that they go, like if you're hauling from Independence, go on up the hill and hit the highway. But they said that's such a long grade there, it's hard on their, their truck. Cause you gotta stop at the railroad crossing and then when you get going again, it's, it eat up your clutch. I'm sorry, you had a.
Aaron, so I'm the guy that's made subtle complaints about my yard and the rest.
Oh, I didn't realize that was you. I'm sorry, Aaron.
I've noticed.
I kept calling you that one guy.
Yeah, so I've noticed on Yonk Street, if they go turn north onto Third, I mean, south onto Third, you have that concrete block right there.
Right there, that culvert. It's an old culvert, yeah.
I mean, if they get rid of that, that'll open up a much wider turn radius versus going into my yard near that pole to make that turn.
I don't know, could that culvert be, or that top of that culvert be removed, Eric? I, I. You know, that used to, the reason why that's there, because that used to be open on both sides of that. And they, they filled in the, the side to the east. Years ago. I don't know, we could, we could look at that.
So that's a potential solution anyways. I mean, we talked about it, but we didn't really have any solutions.
There's no good way to get to the, the back dock at C and D Batteries. You know, if we could get C and D just to start hauling everything to the front docks, problem would go away.
Cause I, what I remember in that area, it seemed like Down Street was the straight shot back there.
It's tough. Shipping and receiving's there in the back.
So, so what do we want to do with this? Do we wanna?
Well, I think, I think today we're, we're better with the grain trucks at least than we were. But it still doesn't haul, solve his problem with the trucks trying to make that turn.
So we can take a look at baby movement, get rid of that culvert if we can.
Yeah, so then we're just gonna ask Eric then to go out and look and see what you can do?
Well, we'll have to do some research because I'm not for sure what they used as before my time. What they used to basically fill in the opposite side of that ditchhead or, you know, if they poured concrete. Cause I mean, you don't want to go in there and when they did that, of course, they would have looked at this as yard space. So it may not be structurally sound enough to make it to where somebody can.
I think there's tile on there. I've seen pictures when they were putting that in. I think it was just big tile. Maybe clay tile, I don't know.
So is it possible that we could pour a pad there, um, it, you know, to flatten it out, you know, to where they could actually run on it, you know?
I wouldn't see why. I mean, I, I don't know if that's our property, if that is their property.
Maybe you could just look at it and make a recommendation. I mean, and, and the roads actually, you know, this, it's this way everywhere in town. The road's wider than what the road is. I mean, the, the right of way is much wider than the road is. So we may own six feet on the other side of that, that culvert that he's talking about. And, you know, to say honestly, it's where they're cutting up through your grass there, that, that's, they're on the road, they're on the right of way. But I understand you take care of it, you know, you don't want, you don't want it all messed up either. I even suggested maybe we get some of those, I call them chevrons, the, the little arrows, you know, that there's like six of them in a row. Plant a couple of those up through there, just get their attention.
Or just plant a big rock right there.
That'll get their attention.
So, so I, so I think, I think we've heard your concern and it sounds to me like we've got a solution at least to the next step. And, uh, I think that's about as good as we can do for right now. So.
I'll take what I can get.
Yep. Thank you for your concerns and sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't realize that that was you. It was. Did put two and two together, I guess. All right. Uh, final council roundtable, Mr. Rodrick.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Smith.
Uh, I just have a couple of things and, uh, so, um, I know down, I've been to places that have had, you know, issues with crime and, and violence and all kinds of different things. And the best way that they get that under control is they just put cameras there and then they, they display to the public. When they walk by that there's somebody watching those cameras, okay? And, um, and so I, I, I think that a lot of these things that we're talking about, I don't know the expense. But I would hope that we would be able to come up with some kind of number to give, give somebody, whether it's parks or police or whoever. Give cameras and give monitors. And I don't know if you have dispatcher that could sit there and watch them, watch those things or whatever. But I, I think that we have to start moving away from talking about the problem because we've already covered that many times. And it just continues to come back up and actually start really moving forward, uh, with a, with a solution. And I'm gonna recommend that we try to find. And I'm gonna recommend that we try to find some money for the police department to install cameras in hotspots. And, uh, whether it's down on the riverfront, which it sounds to me like, and cameras can replace, um, that need for that extra patrol, patrol person. If, if they're there, and they, and they function and they work correctly. So I think that it's a, something that we really should consider doing, uh, and sooner than later. And, uh, so that's the first thing I wanna talk about, or mention in the roundtable. And then, uh, the second thing is just going back and reiterating that, um, I really hope that we can find ways to get more money. To the Parks Department and find ways to get them, uh, to start walking in lockstep with us. And, and Eli, it's great to have you here, but I hope that the Parks Department can be here every time as we continue to move forward. Because, again, I think Ravine Park, um, and, and the riverfront are two just wildly great opportunities for us. Uh, as a city to generate new income. And, and I will also say that I know that there's lots of money that's available for any kind of river, riverfront development. And, um, and it comes from different sources, uh, uh, DNR, Lilly, there's all kinds of different grants. And I know the Blue River has some, they're doing stuff, but I think that the city of Attica should pursue it. And I think that we could get, um, new, new digs for Eric's guys down there, uh, you know, for, for the, the city garage. I think that they're right on the riverfront, and there might be opportunities with some of these bigger grants. Cause I mean, I can envision seeing a ramp come off of the bridge that goes right into the riverfront. And, um, and, and, and maybe even, uh, something going under the bridge and going back up, I don't know. But, um, I really think that there's a lot of money to, and, and I think it's time, I think it's time. The city is paid to have all those houses knocked down, uh, and it's wide open. And Heritage Days was on full display with what can be done. So I think that we start entertaining, how can we get on the calendar, two, at least two more weekends of, uh, activities for the city. And I know it's a lot of work, but I'm gonna work on it, and, uh, um, and I'd sure love to see, uh, Attica, Attica Riverfront. LLC nonprofit be created, uh, to start the process, so that's my say.
Sounds like you're a champion.
Well, I'd be one of them, I can't do it by myself.
All right, thank you. Jimmy?
I've got nothing new to say. Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Mr. Moss?
Uh, it's good to see all of our department heads here together. I really appreciate remembering you guys and, and your departments do for us, and the clerk's office, all you guys, uh. Do a wonderful job for us, and I really appreciate everything you guys do. Thanks for taking the time to come.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second.
Motion to the second, all third. All right, thank you, everybody, thanks for coming, Corinne, thank you. Good to have you here. Always appreciate your input.